I wanted to share about the Holy Mass. Again, it's unfathomable. It's just beyond our understanding. So I just really prayed for months and tried to put together some things that really have touched me. As Wes said, I'm doing classes on the sacraments. And the sacraments flow from the holy sacrifice of the Mass. And so I thought this would be the perfect avenue to share where all the graces of the sacraments flow from. If we had eyes to see what was going on in the Holy Mass, I'm gonna try to pull together all kinds of things. I pulled, I'm gonna pull together a mystic's understanding of the Mass. She was showing what happens at the Mass through Jesus and Mary. So I'm gonna be pulling together Scripture, the mystics, their understanding. I'm gonna be pulling together the fulfillment of all that God had started with His chosen people from the beginning of time. There's just so much to say, and we'll see how much we can get through. What I've given you is, you can kind of not pay attention to that right now. If that's for you, we'll pull it together so you can pay attention up here. So what is the holy sacrifice of the Mass? First and foremost, it's a mystery. It's something that is beyond us to really truly understand. It's heavenly worship. When we go to Mass, we are entering into the worship of Jesus, offering Himself to the Father. It's a re-presentation of the Last Supper and the sacrifice of Jesus on the cross. It's the passable mystery of the whole Christ. The life, passion, death, resurrection, ascension, and glory. It is a new Passover. It is thanksgiving, a sacrifice of praise. It is the wedding feast of the Lamb. It is a sacrifion of meal. It's a new creation. It's the means and manifestation of unity. Participants receive and give the love of God. So it's a way that God is allowing us to enter into the Holy Trinity in and through Jesus. Saint John Leany said, "If we really understood the Mass, we would die of joy." And I think the key to really understanding the Mass is love. "It is love that explained everything to me," Saint John Paul II said. Can you guys see through me? Do you wanna move? Are you okay? And for those who haven't been to my classes, the sacraments are not mere appearances. They're not rituals. They are the power of Jesus Christ present in the sacraments. So the Holy Mass brings forth the sacraments. And they're not just appearances. They're not just rituals. They're His very power. They're not decoration, but they're the very love of Christ poured out in blood, His life, strength, power, sacrifice. Love poured out upon us to strengthen us, transform us, empower us to live as other Christ. So everything God does is for a reason. He gives us the Mass and He gives us the sacraments so they can strengthen us, so they can transform us, they can empower us, and they can transform us into other Christ. It is the fulfillment of what Jesus told in John, Chapter 6. If you've never read John, Chapter 6, it's a beautiful, incredible, long, lengthy reading and discourse that Jesus spoke about how He is the living bread from heaven. And He said, "If anyone eats of this bread, he will live forever. He who eats My flesh and drinks My blood has eternal life and abides in Me, and I in Him." When we receive Jesus, we live in Him, and He lives in us. It's an unfathomable mystery. So again, what I try to do, I try to teach theology on my knees. I try to do it in and through prayer because that's the only way that we can really come to know what we're talking about. Because we can learn, we can have all kinds of theological degrees, but if we're proud, if we're not praying, it just will make us arrogant. It will make, it will be the exact opposite of what we want. And so in and through Mary, she helps center us. She helps us be humble. She helps us pray. She prayed the mystery of Jesus. It is through Mary that Jesus received His flesh. He would not have had the flesh of a human being without Mary. She offered her flesh in union with the Holy Spirit. So she's integral, and she is so helpful to us in understanding. She's a woman of faith. This Mary of Nazareth, the mother of God. She has given us a model in this pilgrimage. Through Mary, we learn to surrender to God's will in all things. We learn to trust when all hope seems gone. It is in Mary that we come to understand the mysteries of the Mass in a way that we could never understand on our own. She is our mother, and she wants to help us. She has, she gives us a window into Jesus's hidden life. Just remember, Jesus is present in the Eucharist, and He's offering His whole self, not just the self that died on the cross, but His whole life from the womb through His glory. And so all of His words and actions are salvific. They already, they anticipate that passable mystery, that Lamb of God who was offered up for us, that New Passover. This is pretty dark, but this is how close Jesus and Mary were. If you, we just watched the Passion again on Good Friday, and how in tune they were, they understood each other. And she could be with Jesus in a way that nobody else could because she, they were so one. Not just giving Jesus His flesh, but they were one of hearts. They were both, all about giving themselves completely to the Father and doing the Father's will. So Mary is going to be our guide. She's gonna help us. The celebration of the Holy Mass is as valuable as the death of Jesus on the cross. I know for me, I try to go to daily Mass. And I have for years and years. It can become a routine, right? And sometimes we don't really understand or think about what we're doing, and we can just go through the motions. So this is, hopefully, kind of a wake-up call for all of us. So when we go to Mass, we can truly enter into the mysteries and realize it is as valuable as Jesus died on the cross. Or actually, at the foot of the cross, at the Mass, the cross of the death of Jesus is being re-presented. A martyr called Emeritus said, "Without the Lord, today we cannot live." From the very beginning of our church, the Christians, the followers of Christ came together. And they, that's how they lived. They came together to break the bread, is how they called it. And again, from Jesus's side, from Jesus's sacrifice, come all the gifts of all the sacraments. They all flow from that. If we understood the value of the Mass, it brings souls to heaven who have died, right? That's why we offer Masses for those who have died. It's like Jesus comes down and picks up us and those who have died and brings them to Himself. Maximilian Kolbe says, "Never worry that you do not feel this love. If you have the will to love, you already give the proof that you love. What counts is the will to love." So I try, sometimes our feelings don't correspond with what we will, but it's more important that we choose to love. We go, whether or not we feel love or not, it goes beyond that. So I'd like to talk about the Eucharistic miracle of Buenos Aires, Buenos Aires in Argentina. There's a, whoops. It's a video that I'd like to share with you, if I can get it started.
How long is the video?
A minute.
One of the most difficult teachings in the Catholic Church is one of the most difficult teachings we ever ask and believe, that Jesus is really physically present in the bread and wine consecrated by the priest during the Holy Mass.
Can you guys hear that?
In fact, some priests through the ages have struggled with this Catholic belief. But God recognizes that many of us need help to believe, and from time to time, has provided for us clear proof and miracles to help us with our faith in the real presence of His Son in the Eucharist. Some of these miracles have happened long ago. Some have happened in recent times. One of these is an Eucharistic miracle that took place in 1996 in a church in Buenos Aires, Argentina, in the diocese of Auxilri Bishop Jorge Mario Vergollano, who would become our current Pope Francis. This is what happened. At seven o'clock on the evening of August 18, 1996, Father Alejandro Pezzetta was saying Holy Mass at St. Mary Catholic Church in the center of Buenos Aires. As he was finishing distributing Holy Communion, a woman came up to tell him that she had found a discarded host at the back of the church. Someone had dropped it and had not wished to consume the dirty host. Father Alejandro went and retrieved the unconsumed Eucharist. As is the practice in these situations, he placed it in a container of water and put it away in the tabernacle to sit so that it could dissolve. Father Alejandro knew that in several days, the Eucharist would dissolve, and he would be able to respectfully dispose of it by watering a plant with the water. On Monday, August 26, upon opening the tabernacle, Pezzetta saw to his amazement that the host had not dissolved, but rather it had turned into a bloody substance. He informed Auxilri Bishop Jorge Vergollano, who gave instructions that the host be professionally photographed. The photos were taken on September 6. They clearly show that the host, which had become a fragment of bloodied flesh, had grown significantly in size. For several years, the host remained in the tabernacle, the whole affair being kept a strict secret. Since the host suffered no visible decomposition, the now Archbishop Vergollano decided to have it scientifically analyzed. On October 5, 1999, in the presence of the Archbishop's representatives, Professor Dr. Ricardo Castagnon, a neuropsychophysiologist, was given permission to take a sample of the bloody fragment for testing, and he brought it to New York for analysis. Since he did not wish to prejudice the study, he purposely did not inform the team of scientists of where the sample came from. One of these scientists was Dr. Frederick Zuccaba, the well-known cardiologist and forensic pathologist. Zuccaba determined that the analyzed substance was real flesh and blood containing human DNA. As he looked down at his microscope, he said, "I can tell you exactly what this is. This flesh is part of the muscle of the heart found in the wall of the left ventricle. It's the muscle that gives the heart its beat and the body its life. I can see infiltrated through this tissue white blood cells, and that tells me two things, that this heart was alive at the moment that this sample was taken because white blood cells die outside of a living organism. And also, these white blood cells go to address injury. So this heart has suffered. This is the sort of thing I see in patients that have been beaten about the chest." Two Australians, journalist Mike Willissey and lawyer Ron DeZeraro, involved in the investigations, also witnessed these tests. Knowing where the sample had come from, they were dumbfounded by Dr. Zuccaba's testimony. Mike Willissey asked the scientist how long the white blood cells would have remained alive if they had come from a piece of human tissue which had been kept in water. "They would have ceased to exist in a matter of minutes," Dr. Zuccaba replied. The journalist then told the doctor that the source of the sample had first been kept in ordinary water for a month, and then for another three years in a container of distilled water. Only then had the sample been taken for analysis. Dr. Zuccaba was at a loss to account for this fact. "There was no way of explaining it scientifically," he stated. Only then did Mike Willissey inform Dr. Zuccaba that the analyzed sample came from a consecrated host, white unleavened bread, that had mysteriously turned into bloody human flesh. Amazed by this information, Dr. Zuccaba replied, "How and why a consecrated host would change its character and become living human flesh and blood will remain an inexplicable mystery to science, a mystery totally beyond her competence." Then Dr. Ricardo Castagnon arranged to have the lab reports from the Buenos Aires miracle compared to the lab reports on a relic from a similar miracle that took place in Luchano, Italy over 1,200 years ago, again without revealing the origin of the test samples. The experts making the comparison concluded that the two lab reports must have originated from test samples obtained from the same person. They further reported that both samples revealed an AB positive blood type. They are all characteristic of a man who was born and lived in the Middle East region. How can the events of the miracle of Buenos Aires be explained? Only faith in the extraordinary action of a God provides the reasonable answer. Faith in a God who wants to make us aware that He is truly present in the mystery of the Eucharist. As a result of his investigation of this and other miracles, Dr. Ricardo Castagnon, who was a staunch atheist much of his life, converted to Catholicism. Whenever you receive communion, may the miracle of Buenos Aires help to remind you of the awesome miracle and sacrifice of Christ in the Eucharist, allowing Him to nourish you with His presence.
That never fails to touch me. I think sometimes our faith is so familiar that we cease to be in awe, that it ceases to move us. So we pray for the grace to be truly in awe of the mystery, that Jesus is present for us. And His presence in a way that He achieved that by His suffering so deeply for us. Eucharistic miracles encourage us to understand, appreciate, and love the Eucharist. They can help a person discover the mystery, the beauty, and the riches. You must never forget and never fail to mention that the Eucharist is the true, great, inexhaustible, daily miracle. Sometimes we feel like miracles never happen anymore, you know? If we had lived back in the early church. But we have the greatest of all miracles that happens continuously throughout the world because the sacrifice of the Mass is offered all day long, all morning, all night, constantly. And sometimes we can have fear of what's going on in this world. And that's why I brought the Eucharistic miracle of St. Clair back in 1240, the version of ISIS. Back then, they were, like they're doing so throughout the Holy Land today. They're destroying all the Catholic churches. They're going in there. The Christians, Christians today are the most persecuted people of the planet. And so back then, they were doing the same thing. They had decided to come and override this convent, this monastery where St. Clair was. And so she got Jesus in the Eucharist, and she just held them up in front of them, and they all fled in fear. They were scared to death, and they left the convent and all the sisters alone. Liturgy means literally the work of God. And so this is going to try to enter into these infinite mysteries and participate in them. So we can participate in them, hopefully. Throughout the Mass, there's a multitude of signs. Just like in the sacraments, it's a sign instituted by Christ to give grace. There are a multitude of signs everywhere in the Mass that we encounter, and they are all meant to instruct. Every word spoken or sung, every posture and gesture, every sign and symbol, every furnishing and vessel, all of it should serve the singular purpose of drawing the faithful ever more deeply into the mystical work of Christ, who is truly present and active in the sacred liturgy. So it's the work of Christ that we participate in. He is still, He gave Himself once for all, but He is continuously before the throne of the Father and proceeding for us because He is eternal. All time and space is as one for Him. So He is continuing this work of salvation. One of the greatest things that we can do, and which I'm not very good at sometimes, is to prepare ourselves. This is from the Catechism. "The assembly should prepare itself to encounter its Lord and to become a people well-disposed. The more we are prepared, the more we can enter into the mysteries and the more we can participate. The preparation of hearts is the joy of work of the Holy Spirit and the assembly, especially of its ministers. The grace of the Holy Spirit seeks to awaken faith, conversion of heart, and adherence to the Father's will. These dispositions are the precondition both for the reception of other graces conferred in the celebration itself and the fruits of new life, which the celebration is intended to produce afterward. So it's our disposition that determines how much we'll receive from the sacrifice of the Mass." "Mother Church earnestly desires that all the faithful should be led to that fully conscious and active participation in the turgidal celebrations which is demanded by the very nature of the liturgy. Such participation by the Christian people as a chosen race, a royal priesthood, a holy nation, a redeemed people is their right and duty by reason of baptism. For it is the primary and indispensable source from which the faithful are to derive the true Christian spirit. The assembled faithful should be made ever more holy by conscious, active, and fruitful participation in the mystery of the Eucharist. When the Church prays, or sings, or acts, the faith of those taking part is nourished and their minds are raised to God. So when the Church prays, when the Church sings, when the Church acts, it's calling us to participate, right? Not just stand there and not sing, not participate. We should not just be at Mass as strangers or silent spectators. On the contrary, through a good understanding of the rites and prayers, they should take part in the sacred action, conscious of what they're doing with devotion and full collaboration. You know, the more that we participate, the more that we sing, the more that we say the prayers, the more it's going to mean to us. "If you wish to participate in the Mass actively, you must follow with your eye, heart, and mouth all that happens on the altar. Further, you must pray with the priest the holy word said by him in the name of Christ in which Christ says by him. You have to associate your heart with the holy feelings which are contained in these words. And in this manner, you ought to follow all that happens on the altar. When acting in this way, you have prayed for the Mass." So our disposition should be that of the divine Redeemer Himself when He sacrificed Himself. When we go to Mass, if we are to enter into it and pray it fully, we are to have the same humble spirit of submission, of adoration, love, praise, and thanksgiving to the great majesty of God, so that we reproduce in ourselves the condition of victimhood, the self-denial that follows the Gospel's teaching, whereby of our own accord we make the willing sacrifice of penitence, sorrow, and expiation for our sins. We participate in offering of ourselves, sacrificing our lives to God as Christ did. That's entering into the Mass more fully. The Catholic Mass is our daily portal to heaven. If we had eyes to see, at Eucharist is being celebrated, the sanctuary is filled with countless angels who adore the divine victim immolated on the altar. The angels are carrying our prayers to God, to the throne of God. Our prayers are rising like incense. So the beginning of the Mass starts with the opening prayer. It's called the Collect. And it's collecting all of our prayers and gathering them into one. And then we enter into the penitential act, where we, the more fully we acknowledge our sins and we are deeply sorry for them, the more we can enter into the mysteries more fully. That is one of the things that Mary showed Catalina, the mystic that I gave you the handout for. She said in number eight, "From the bottom of your heart, ask the Lord's forgiveness for all your faults, for having offended Him. And in this way, you will be able to participate worthily in the privilege that is to attend Holy Mass." She had just gone to confession the night before, so she said, "First thing I thought of is I'm gonna state a grace that I don't have any sins." And then Mary proceeded to share that she did have sins. And then, Mary proceeded to share that she did have sins. And she called to mind some of the things that she had done. She was uncharitable to someone. She had spoken against someone else, and she had arrived late to Mass. And our Blessed Mother talks about how important it is not to arrive late to Mass.
What is this? This Catalina?
She is a woman who I think lived in Mexico. I think it's on the very back.
What year?
I didn't write that down, but I'm not sure.
Those are the apparitions you saw on her head?
And it has an infomater. So, nothing in it is contrary to faith, it just helps open us up to what's truly going on. She says, "Why must you all arrive at the last moment? You should arrive earlier so you can say a prayer and ask the Lord to send His Holy Spirit. And the Holy Spirit can grant you peace and cleanse you of the spirit of the world, your worries, your problems, your distractions, in order that you may be able to live in so sacred enrollment." She said, "This is the greatest of miracles. You are going to live in the moment when the Most High God gives His greatest gift and you do not appreciate it." So, the Holy Church in her wisdom, she puts the penitential act at the beginning of Mass so we can prepare our hearts and we can be truly sorry so God can forgive us. And so, our hearts will be open. Because sin blinds us. Sin hardens our heart and it keeps us from entering into what He'd like for us to know, to do, and be. And Saint Paul tells us, "A person should examine themselves." Anyone who eats and drinks without discerning the body eats and drinks judgment. So, it's an important thing that we should only go to receive communion if we are in a state of grace. We should go to confession if we need to. And when we go to confession, it's the fountain of... This is Mary, uh, Jesus speaking to Saint Hosanna. "It's the fountain of my mercy. The blood and water which came forth from my heart always flows down upon your soul and ennobles it." So, when we go to confession, it's like we're kneeling at the foot of the cross as well. And His blood transforms us and makes us new, takes away all our sin. The next part of the Mass is the Gloria. Does anyone remember where the Gloria comes from in Scripture?
Christmas.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Do you remember? It was in Shepherd's Field. And I'm all too close for seeing glory to God in my eyes. That's where we get the Gloria.
It's not like his birth?
What?
It's just like his birth. When he was born.
Yes, yes. Yes, yes. So, we can celebrate the Feast of Christmas every day, Saint Paul draws sets, right? Even every moment in the interior temple of your spirit, remain like a baby in the bosom of the Heavenly Father, where you will be re-worn each moment in the Divine Word of Jesus Christ. So, again, I don't have time, but every word is permeated with the grace and love of God. So, when you are at Mass, to meditate on every word of the Gloria is very, very fruitful and collective. And then, we come to the Liturgy of the Word. And the Liturgy of the Word is so striking. It's perfectly planned for every day throughout the year. The Church has planned it. It has a three-year cycle so that if you go to daily Mass, you pretty much have read the entire Scriptures, you know the entire Scriptures. And we read Scripture to encounter Christ. That's why we read all of Scripture. "The Church has always venerated the Divine Scriptures as she venerated the body of the Lord." This is from the Catechism. "Your word is a lamp to my feet and a light to my path." The Scriptures are there to nourish us, to light our path. The Liturgy is where Scripture comes to life, where the written text becomes a living word. "All the promises of the Old Testament and the New point toward the Liturgy of the Church, which is an earthly sharing and the eternal Liturgy in heaven." Remember, I talked about that the Mass is this Liturgy, this great feast that's going on in heaven as we speak. So, the Mass is... The very first Mass was at the Last Supper. The second Mass, they say, was on the road to Amos. Do you remember? Jesus was in His risen state and the disciples did not recognize Him. And so, He explained why Jesus had to suffer and die, and He opened up Scriptures to them. He explained all the fulfillment that had taken place. And then, they recognized Him in the breaking of the bread, and then He disappeared. That was the second Mass, they say. And they said, "Were not our hearts burning when He spoke to us on the way and opened Scriptures to us?" That is one of the greatest ways that I can enter into Mass right now. I love to just pour over the Scriptures. If you have a daily missal with a daily Mass readings, it's so helpful, at least for me. Show me my daily missal. I underline and I star and I write notes and I just... It just comes alive for me. That's how I hear God and I hear what He's saying to me to do. So, I encourage you, if you're not really pouring over the Scriptures of daily Mass, they're an incredible help. "If the Scriptures are not to remain a dead letter, Christ, the eternal Word of the Living God, must through the Holy Spirit open our minds to understand them." So, all Scripture is inspired. It means literally, God read them. They're all useful for teaching, rebuking, correcting, training in righteousness. And so, the last word is powerful and it's very personal. Sometimes we get the idea that Scripture was only true 2,000 years ago. It was only about something that happened 2,000 years ago. But it's really very personal. It becomes alive. It's living and effective and it touches us each personally if we open up our hearts to receive it. Scripture, it has the ability to transform us by renewing our mind. It fills us with the truth of God that we are not hearing on a daily basis. The world that we live in is so far from the truth of God. So, this helps us to stay centered. But we have to... All of this is... We have to remember how I started. We have to pray. We have to be silent. We have to ask the Holy Spirit, "Help us." And like John, we have to stay close to Jesus and stay on His breast, right? So, He can open up the meanings of Scripture for us. And again, the more that we meditate on Scriptures, the more that they... the splendor of them will appear. And like I said before, it's not something that just happened 2,000 years ago when you read Scriptures. Is one of the same sentence describes a fact and reveals a mystery. I love that. It has an amazing quote. You know, oftentimes, the Protestant churches talk about their religion of the book. But Christianity is really what Catholic Church says, is we are a religion of the Word of God. The Word of God is a person. It is not a written and viewed word, but it is the Word incarnate and living. It's Christ living, it's Christ alive. Throughout all of sacred history, before Christ came, you know, the Israelite people would just beg God, "Oh, that you would run the heavens and come down." That's what He does at every sacrifice of the Mass. He runs the heavens and comes down. If we had eyes to see, our hearts opened to know. The next part of the Mass is what we believe. And I didn't write it all down, but again, in Mass, if you have time, really pray over what we're saying, what we're proclaiming, what we believe. Spend some time with that. What we believe is the Word became flesh and made His dwelling among us. So, it speaks about that, speaks about His life in the Trinity. And now, it's time for the Offertory. And I had just read these mystical revelations to Catalina before I went to daily Mass last night. Again, and the daily Mass goes so fast. You know, I thought, I'd be amazingly alert throughout all the Mass and then it's like, whoa, that just went by again. So, be gentle with yourself. We're humans, we're never going to be able to worship perfectly, right? This is really beautiful, what Mary revealed and what Catalina saw during the Offertory. She said, pray like this. This is on the second page here, towards the bottom. "Lord, I offer all that I am, all that I have, all that I can, and put everything into Your hands. Build up, Lord, with the little I am, with the little that I am, transforming, God Almighty, through the merits of Your Son. I ask from my family, from my benefactors, for each member of our apostolate, for all the people who persecute us, for those who commend themselves to my full prayers, teach me to lay my heart down on the ground before them so that their walk may be less hard. This is how the saints prayed, this is how I want all of you to pray." So, the Offertory is a chance for us to offer ourselves to the Father, in and with Jesus, as He offered Himself to the Father. And she said, as what... Her eyes were open to see that a being came from the side of each person present, and it was their guardian angel. And their guardian angels went up and they offered what they had been given to offer at the front of the altar. And she said, "Some of the guardian angels were glorious and they had these big golden bowls filled with offerings from people that truly understood the value of the Mass. And they were offering up wonderful, godly, amazing things." And then, there are other guardian angels who were going up empty-handed for all the people that weren't offering anything at that time. And some guardian angels were very, very sad because the soul that they were accompanying was not even conscious of anything of what was going on in the Mass. It's... If we had eyes to see, right? So, help us, help this remind you in the Offertory, to offer ourselves to God, the Almighty Father. And then, become the canon of the Mass, the Eucharistic Prayer, or the Anaphora. It always begins with a preface after the priest says, "The Lord be with you and with your spirit." And they're always beautiful prefaces, and they're changed depending on the time of year and what's going on. So, this is the Passion, one of the Passion ones. "It is truly right and just, it always starts that way. But in this time, to what do you get, oh, Lord, slay, when Christ, our Passover, has been sacrificed." So, this is during Lent, when Jesus is offering Himself as a sacrifice of the Passover Lamb. "Through Him, the children of light rise to eternal life, and the halls of the heavenly kingdom are thrown open to the faithful, for His death is our ransom from death, and His rising, the life of all has risen. And in His rising, the life of all has risen. Therefore, overcome the passable joy, every land, every people exults in Your praise, and even the heavenly powers with the angelic host sing together the unending hymn of Your glory." So, it's kind of hard to pay attention sometimes. The priest doesn't say it very clearly, but if you can pay attention to the preface, it's always beautiful. It's another one that it has to do with Jesus ascending into His glory. And then, we pray, "The Holy, Holy, Holy." And where does that come from in Scripture? Does the picture give it away a little bit? It comes from lots of different places, actually. But one of the places it comes is Palm Sunday, when we just came riding in triumph to Jerusalem. They said, "Blessed is He who comes in the name of the Lord," and this goes on to the highest, right? It's also in Revelation, it's in Isaiah, it's in lots of different places. The angels are singing, "Holy, Holy, Holy, Lord, God, the Host." Revelation talks about that this is the heavenly Liturgy that's going on. The angels are singing this. And so, it's a glorious time when this comes part of the Mass, to enter into it and truly be thankful and to rejoice and really believe that heaven and earth are full of God's glory. And Hosanna, I just... Does anybody know what Hosanna means? Grant Petrie, if you can go to thegrantpetrie.com. He's an amazing Scripture scholar. I just learned this from him a couple of weeks ago. Hosanna means, "Lord, save us."
I've heard that before. Is that Hebrew or Greek?
Yeah. And it's from the Book of Isaiah. So, if we are singing or saying, "The Holy, Holy, Holy", let us remember the host of heavenly angels, and that's what Mary revealed and showed, that besides all the guardian angels, at the Holy, 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 there's just a multitude of angels that come and they are present at each and every sacrifice of the Mass. And then, the canon, I just... It's long and it's beautiful. So, again, if you can enter into those words of the canon, of that Eucharistic Prayer sometime, help us truly live the mystery of the Mass. And then, Mary said that after, once the Eucharistic Prayer started, then the saints came and joined in as well during this Eucharistic Prayer. So, Catalina was able to see her family members who had died and were in heaven. She got to see them around the altar. She said, "Everything disappeared behind the altar. Along with the priest, there were the angels and the saints, and Mary's kneeling in adoration. Mary says, "I'm always present." And the epiphanies is when the priest asks for the power of the Holy Spirit, and that power of the Holy Spirit is what changes the bread and wine into the body and blood of our Lord.
Is that what she says here?
That's really what the Church says. She doesn't explain every little detail, but yeah.
A question. I had an experience around Advent. And we started a study about, ladies group started a study about the Holy Spirit, which I really didn't have that much connection with. And, but during Mass, one day, Sunday afternoon, and I was just observing and listening to praise and concentration. And I was thinking to myself, "I have children, I've given birth." And I was thinking, the thought came to me that really, when the host is consecrated, changes from bread to the body of Jesus, that's conception, that's conception. And then, and then the thought continued on, when the wine is consecrated, it's like, it's blood. And in birth, there is conception. Well, of course, there's conception, and then at birth, there's a release of blood. And it's like, it was very profound for me to be able to relate that.
That's beautiful. Again, the Mass is so infinite, that each one of us can have incredible insights and profound thoughts that really help us. And sometimes those thoughts and insights would help somebody else, but they would be incredibly helpful to us, you know? And they're a piece of the glory that's happening. And that's beautiful. That's what the Mass is supposed to be for each one of us. It's supposed to bring out these thoughts and these inspirations.
I mentioned it to our parish priest. And he said, I don't remember exactly what he said, but in essence, it was, that's why the Church has such an emphasis on marriage. I don't try to remember what the husband was saying, but the sacrament, it is so powerful, it's so beautiful.
It is. It's the most powerful image of the Holy Trinity on earth is the sacrament of marriage and that fruitfulness that comes from husband and wife. Love, and husband and wife, yes, it's beautiful.
Janine, what is that word mean, please, epiphanies?
Dusty? I'm not sure.
I'm not sure.
It's a Latin word.
I know what it signifies.
That looks great.
Oh, very great, a great word for when the outpouring of the Holy Spirit.
Epic, you know, I can see that word in there.
Jesus said to Catalina again, "The Last Supper was the moment of the greatest intimacy with my own. During that hour of love, I instituted what in the eyes of mankind might be the greatest madness, to make myself a prisoner of love. I instituted the Eucharist. I wanted to remain with you until the end of time, because my love could not bear that you, whom I love more than my life, be left orphans." Remember, Jesus said, "Before you die, I will not leave you orphans. I will be with you always, until the end of the world." This is His means of doing that, is through the holy sacrifice of the Mass and the Eucharist. And then Luke, it says, "I eagerly desire to eat this Passover with you before I suffer." I just love that. Every time I, I really love Luke's version of a lot of things. And he adds some things that really touch my heart. And again, it's this re-presentation of the Last Supper is what we experience at the Mass.
Oh, no, you did a great recording to Catalina. She says, "You personally have to write this up. Well, we prepared this, but it says, "The concentration of the voice of the wine."
I'm gonna get there, I'm not there yet, hang on a second. So, and then Jesus offered Himself. He changed the bread and wine into the body and blood. And He also, remember, part of the Last Supper was that He washed His disciples' feet. It was supposed to be an act of love. That's what we're supposed to get, or take from it. And so the concentration of the bread, this is what happens at the holy sacrifice of the Mass. And no matter where you go throughout the world, it's always the same. Everything is perfectly clarified. It tells the priest exactly what they're supposed to do, how they are supposed to do it, exactly what they're supposed to say, how they're supposed to say it. And that was one of the things that touched my heart so much when I was in college. I went on a trip to Europe, and I was just, it was just so meaningful to me that I could go to this Mass, no matter where I was, and it was always the same Mass. It always had the same readings, it always was the exact same Mass. There's something so beautiful in that, there's that unity and that universality at the same time. So at the concentration of the bread, this is what Catalina saw. And before, she said that she saw shadows, or the souls of the inventory. She didn't, they weren't actually present there, they were shadows of them there. She said, "As the priest was consecrating the bread into the body of Christ," this is on 47, she said that the host, oh, He began to grow. Because we believe that the priest isn't really offering the Mass to Jesus in and through the priest. So she sees this, that a supernatural light enveloped Him, and she saw that in and around His hands were the hands of Christ. It was Jesus who was offering up. He was saying these words in and through Jesus. It's called in persona Christi. That's how we are able to have this incredible miracle of miracles, because Jesus Himself is offering it. And she said, "Don't look down at this time." And she said that the host became huge, enormous, and the face of Christ appeared, and Christ's face was looking with such intense love at her. But she said, "It wasn't just at her, it was at every single person that was present. He was loving." You were able to see the face of Christ in the host. In the concentration of the wine, which is what you were wanting to say, was of Jesus, she saw Jesus crucified. And the blood of that sacrifice, she said, "It was so superlative. It was just, she couldn't imagine that it wasn't overflowing the chalice."
So she all, didn't agree on the second sense, and at the moment of the concentration, I mean, those priests agreed, you know, it's like when the hands of the chalice, that's when the concentration. There's no real proof that the concentration actually happened. She says it's during after the presentation of the wine.
Well, that's what was shown to her. I don't know if it's exactly delineated. I don't know if you can say that. She's just expressing, this is like an expression of what has happened. And it has to be kind of delineated for our wine, our human, frail wine. I can't really grasp what can take place instantaneously, I don't know. So the power of the Mass can transform us. Just think of Father Jude, how much He was transformed, that He became a living, visible sign of the crucified Jesus, the crucified Lord. And the psychologist would belittle Him and said, "Oh, it's because you think about the passion so much." You know, that it's a psychosomatic thing that would just happen if you're thinking about it so much. And He said, "Well, I want you to think about," what did He say? Anybody remember this? It's a funny story. "Think about a bull and see how long it takes you to grow horns." You know, if that's all you want to do, just think about a bull constantly. It was funny. So this is my body given for you, this is bloodshed for you and for many, for the conversion of the world. I don't know why it keeps cutting off, but this is what's happening if we had eyes to see, if we really, if we could enter into the mysteries. One of the, a vision that Mary gave to, Mary and Jesus, I think both gave to Sister Lucia, one of the seers of Fatima. She saw this image of the holy sacrifice of the Mass, and grace and mercy is flowing down from the cross. Those are those words. And again, this is, we're trying to enter into this with prayer. So these are things that help us and guide us in our prayer. If we only knew how God regards the sacrifice, we would risk our lives to be present at a single Mass. That's how important it is, that's how glorious it is. And things like this, other saints would talk about, they would rather, they would rather walk on fire than miss the Mass. And these things would pop into my head, the inspirations of the Holy Spirit, when I decided that I didn't really feel like going today, you know? And then this would inspire me to go anyway. These kind of quotes like this. And then after the consecration, we proclaim God, Christ's death, all together in unity. And then at the end of the Eucharistic prayer, we pray, "The glorious docology, through Him, with Him, and in Him, O God almighty Father, in the unity of the Holy Spirit, all glory and honor is yours forever and ever." Kind of like what you said, sometimes the words just hit us, right? And we've heard them a million times before, but the Holy Spirit kind of just brings these out. We've been kind of going through, "My husband is here." Some of you have been praying for him for so long, so thank you. But we've been kind of going through this incredible passion. And God, one time at Mass, all glory and honor just popped out at me. And it was just like, this isn't Jesus just crucified and died. This is Jesus risen and glorious in heaven. This is what we're celebrating at the Mass. So it's not just sorrow, it's glory. If Jesus had not risen from the dead, we would be the most pitiable of men. You know, we wouldn't have any reason to be Christian. It's because of His death and resurrection and glory. And then we proclaim the great amen. And sometimes in our Mass, we don't have opportunity to say amen. You know, sometimes the choir's doing something and it doesn't quite work out, and then the amen is gone. But this is our participation in that great Eucharistic prayer. We need to say amen, that means, "I believe this, I stake my life on it." That's our participation, all of these things that happen, that Jesus is truly present in the bread and wine. It's no longer bread and wine, it's His body and blood. And we stake our life on, we say amen. And this is a picture of the holy martyrs. That's how much our amen should mean to us, that I believe this, I will stake my life on it. And again, we are seeing Christian martyrs in an unprecedented number now that we haven't seen. I don't know, I think, because there's so many more Christians, I think it's more than even the name of Christianity. It's horrendous what our fellow Christians are living through and dying. And then the communion, right, the Lord's Prayer. In the Lord's Prayer, again, from Grant Petrie, if you can look him up, you can see amazing revelations of Scripture and the Mass. He talks about that, "Give us this day our daily bread." Notice that "day" is mentioned twice. "Give us this day our daily bread." He talks about that, that can be, if you look at the word, it means super substantial, it talks about the Eucharist, basically, when Jesus is telling us how to pray. He is saying to pray for our Eucharistic daily supernatural bread. And then we have that rite of peace. And then the Lamb of God. And we say, "I'm not worthy." Who said that first? Do you guys know that from Scripture? "I am not worthy, that you should enter into my life."
That being of his son was dying. Oh, yeah.
Centurion, the centurion, whose slave, whose slave was. So I, I've got a lot of this from Grant Petrie, how the Lamb of God, how Jesus is the Lamb of God, He is the Passover Lamb. So I'm kind of, I'm gonna go through this kind of fast, because there's so much I want to say. To have a Passover Lamb, it is set in Exodus. Remember the story of Exodus? Moses was the deliverer of the people, of the children of God. They were in slavery in Egypt, and they journeyed to the promised land. They, once they got to Mount Sinai, they set up a tabernacle, a temple, and their ultimate destination was Jerusalem. The new Exodus. Jesus, the Messiah, is the new deliverer. He releases us from sin, exile, and death. Our journey is to the new promised land, the new heavens and the earth. We worship God in a new temple. Our ultimate destination is heaven. And so this is something that Dusty and I learned when we were going through the Masters program. This is, I just thought it was fascinating when the teacher talked about the temple sacrifices and the sheer extent of the temple sacrifices. Josephus talks about, there's over 250,000 lambs were sacrificed at one Passover. And it's just all a prefigurement of Jesus who fills that. And it's just all a prefigment of Jesus who fills that animal sacrifice. It's just fascinating. So the more you know, the more that you can really meditate on. And Brant Petrie was talking about, I didn't know this before. He said, "With just the sheer number of lambs who had to be slaughtered," that he would read the Mishnah, the Jewish rites of how they did things, this ancient text of how they offered the Passover lambs. And they said, there would be rows and rows of laypeople, the fathers. Remember, the fathers were the ones that they gathered lamb for each family. The father would bring the lamb up to the rail, and there'd be rows of people. And the father would be the one that would slit the throat of the lamb. And then the priests would catch the blood in a golden suborium. And there'd be rows and rows of priests, so they would pass the bulls from one to another and pass them back. And then new people would come in, and they would pour the blood of the sacrificed lamb upon the altar. And remember, Jesus was at Passover with Joseph and Mary when he was 12? Remember what happens when a young 12-year-old boy in a Jewish faith, he becomes, with the varmitzva, he becomes a man? I can't remember where I heard it, but they said that at that time, it would have been Jesus's first time for him to go with Joseph, to offer the lamb and sacrifice to enter into that deeper part of the temple. And that was his first time to choose, be there as the true Lamb of God, sacrificing the lamb for the Passover meal. And it's something to truly meditate on, that that's when he stayed in the temple and talked to the priests and the scribes while his family didn't know where he was. Calvary is one with the Mass, and the Mass is one with Calvary. So in both, there's the same priest and victim. The seven last words are like the seven parts of the Mass. Fulton Sheen said that. Fulton Sheen promised that he would make a holy hour every day of his priesthood. And he became so prolific, so beautiful, his thought and his fruitfulness was so beautiful. So he designated each word that was spoken from Christ on the cross as a part of the Mass that we just went through. So this is something for you to just meditate on. We don't have time to really talk about it. But "Father, forgive them," was the, I confess, the penitential rite. "Truly, today you will be with me in paradise." That was the obituary. And this is something that always pierced in my heart too. "All your wounds have not wounded my heart as painfully as your lack of trust." That's what Jesus said to Saint Christina. Help us to trust. Behold your Son, behold your Mother. I think I can share this with you in an email if you are interested. You want to give me your email to show how they relate in Bishop Sheen's eyes. "When it seems that to you that your suffering exceeds your strength, contemplate my wounds, and you will rise above human scorn and judgment. Meditate on my passion."
Who said that?
I can't.
Does it?
I don't know why it keeps cutting off. Again, this is from Brant Petrie. Talked about the new Passover. And again, I can share this, a lot of this with you through email if you want. And so Jesus is the new Passover Lamb, He is the new manna. That's what John 6 talks about a lot. He is the new manna. In the Lord's Prayer, "Give us this." "Ubi epi usio..." I don't know how to say it. I can't remember what he said. "Super substantial supernatural bread." The Bread of Life Discourse. Again, read John 6 to help you. And then he tied in the Bread of the Presence from the Old Testament. And it's beautiful. And again, I'll share this with you through email. And this is, Jesus is the Lamb of God, Revelation 5. "I saw in the midst of this room the four living creatures and the elders, a ram that seemed to have been slain." This is actually, this is a representation of a Marian apparition site, NOK. This is a fascinating apparition where she shows the sacrifice of the Mass. With no words at all. Mary, there is statues that appeared that nobody could touch. But the apparition appeared kind of like statues along the wall of the church, on the outside wall. And Mary praying, looking up to heaven. John, the evangelist, is on the side closest to the altar. Saint Joseph is praying on the other side of her. And then there's a lamb standing, though slain, on an altar with angels surrounding him.
Is this in Ireland?
This is. So this is how they have it represented now. They represented it, what appeared. And it lasted for hours. Lots of people saw it. And it transformed that country. People come all over.
When is that?
Eighteen is something. I have it written down. My presenter notes are over there, so that's why I'm not remembering everything. So we come to communion. "If you comprehend all the good things contained in Holy Communion, if we could, nothing more would be wanting to content the heart of man." Jesus said to Saint Christina, "I want to lavish my graces on them, and they do not want to accept them. They treat me as a death object, whereas my heart is full of love and mercy." He lamented to Saint Christina. He said that people come to communion and they're so distracted. They're so busy in their mind about a million other things that they never even truly are present when they receive Jesus and how it makes them so sorrowful. So this Jesus that we receive is, again, not just Jesus crucified, it's the wholeness of Jesus. Whenever Jesus is present, so is the Father and the Holy Spirit. If we had eyes to see that this Jesus is also the God who says, "I am, that I am," in the Old Testament. These are just, again, things for you to think about when you're receiving Jesus. So it's not just a single dimension. It is Jesus conceived in the Holy Mary, where the cloud of glory filled her, like they did in the Old Testament. It's beyond our understanding to know how God became man, to have the Holy Spirit inside of her, something to just marvel and pray. So when you receive Jesus, you could be receiving the unreal of Jesus, right? All the I-am, the Bread of Life, you're receiving the light of the world, the resurrection and the life, the Good Shepherd, the door, the way, the truth, and the life, the true vine, all His manifestations, how He revealed Himself and dawned. If we're not in awe of the fact that God loves us, we don't understand what we've done and what we did. And again, it all comes down to love. And then Jesus is also presented as the bridegroom. He offers us the wedding feast of the lamb. And so this is a study on the bridegroom that I'm not going to have time to share. Again, there is so much that I wanted to share, and it's just too much. Every time someone, Abraham, Moses, Jacob, were looking for a wife, they found the wife at the well. And so when Jesus sees the Samaritan woman and talks to her, it has this bridal imagery. And His gift as a bridegroom is that living water. And from the Old Testament on, in Isaiah and other areas of the Old Testament, God calls Himself our husband, for your husband is your maker. John calls Jesus the bridegroom. This bridegroom is filled with the Spirit. He is anointed to come and save us. There's a beautiful commentary, understanding, inspirational, understanding of the cross as the wedding bed of the lamb. And that's where He is joined to the bride, His church. And He gives Himself, and from that offering, the church is born. It's very beautiful. I actually asked you to make some more copies. I don't think you saw it, because it was a couple of, it was a couple of hours after the first one.
No, I'm sorry, Jan.
That's okay. But it's from Saint John Chrysostom's beautiful meditation on that this sees Jesus on the cross as the marriage bed of the lamb, where He is, His side is pierced, just like Adam's side is pierced when Eve is formed out of Her. So out of this side of Christ, the church is formed out of Jesus. It's very beautiful. So again, it's not just a Passover meal. It's also the wedding feast of the lamb that's taking place continuously in heaven that we are being called to enter into. It's the new creation, Adam and Eve, the new Adam of Jesus and the new Eve, make this new creation. And the prophecy that God gave of the offspring of the woman is going to crush the head of the serpent. And that is the destruction of sin and death that happened on the cross. Again, if you want something to meditate on, is the Book of Revelation. And those last books are just so glorious, talking about the wedding feast of the lamb. He talks about that He's the Alpha and the Omega, He's the springs of living water. If we can remember, when we receive Jesus, the same power that raised Christ from the dead is inside of us. So what are we to fear if we really believe that? So these are meditations for communion. God is waiting for you. And if you are a great sinner, He is waiting for you even more, and waiting for you with great love. And the concluding rites. Why we call it the Mass is from this, the dismissal. It's the shortened form of, we are supposed to, the liturgy is never supposed to end. We're supposed to carry it with us. We're supposed to go forth and bring it to the world. "Were it not for the constant presence of our divine master in the humble chapel, I would not have found it possible to persevere in sharing a lot of the lepers in Malpi. The Eucharist is the bread that gives strength. It is once the most eloquent proof of His love and the most powerful means of fostering His love in us. He gives Himself every day so that our hearts, as burning poles, may set afire the hearts of the faithful." Father Damien. Does anybody know that when they put him on the island with the lepers, he never could leave again? And that when he had, he heard the stories that when he needed to go to confession, he had to yell and scream his sins across the sea to a boat that wouldn't come near him, you know?
A priest on the boat?
Yeah, yeah. So that is what the Eucharist and Mass is supposed to do for us. That's how I feel. If it wasn't for the Holy Sacrifice and the Mass, if it wasn't for the Eucharist, I wouldn't be able to do what God has called me to do, to live with what God is giving me to live with. It is truly the means that His point was His love and His power in being, and in each one of us. And just to remind ourselves, when Christ comes again, the Holy Spirit and the Father is with Him, and we become temples of the Holy Spirit. First, we're temples in baptism, this is a renewal of that. We are temples of the Holy Spirit. We become living tabernacles. A lot of times, I just try to give myself completely to Jesus, close my eyes after communion, like He said, offer myself to Him to receive all the graces He has to give me. But sometimes I feel called to open my eyes and just look at people become living tabernacles after they receive Jesus. Eucharist is the heart and the summit of the church. This is from the catechism. By the sacrifice, He pours out the graces of salvation on His body, which is the church. I have another video.
But there is one thing He cannot take away from you, your faith. Believe, for we will see God's wonders.
This is from the Eucharist Miracle Club, from Tiaia, Venezuela.
You can see the horse. Yes, I can see the horse, yes.
This is, it's reserved in the Adoration Chapel. This is just a pilgrim who came to a door. Most of the time, it looks like that. But as he was filming it, sometimes it would be like a beating heart. And where is this? Venezuela.
It's in Venezuela.
I showed this in my sacraments class. One of the men who's not here tonight said, "I see it as beating heart, but I also see it like an ultrasound." I'm believing. So I've tried to just let it share with you some thoughts and reflections about this, about our Holy Spirit. Trying to get these things to take with you, so I try to live it more dearly, more fully. More fully, live the Eucharist to the Holy Mass, and more transform it.
What are you doing now with everything?
I'm gonna edit it. So let's add a prayer. Good morning, Father, and Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen. Dear Jesus, thank you for bringing us here tonight. Thank you for calling us each by name. Thank you for calling us by the name of the Eucharist. Thank you for giving us the Holy Mass to participate in. May the Holy Mass never be the same for us. May each day we try to live it more fully, enter into it more deeply, allowing it to transform us so that we become other Christ. We thank Him, and we praise You, and we pray as Jesus taught us.
Father, in heaven, hallowed be Thy name. Thy kingdom come, Thy will become, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.